All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight is, today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. It is now 6:30 PM. We are meeting this evening at the Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street in Norwood, Massachusetts. And the meeting is also being broadcast and recorded by Norwood Community Media. So before we introduce tonight's agenda and so forth, as is our tradition, we will have, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just by way of introduction, this evening, we do have one appointment at 6:45 with Impact Norwood. So that's coming up in about just a few minutes. We have a number of new business items, memoranda, we have our update from the manager and our selectmen's addenda. And this evening, we are having an executive session at the end of our open session. And at that time, I will request the Board to, a roll call vote, to go into executive session and we will return to public session. It will be for the purposes of adjournment only. So you're forewarned that we do have an executive session at the end. So first item on the agenda for this evening is warrant signature update, submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant report signed by the Board's representative. Do I have a motion?
Should I accept and file?
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous. And the next item is meeting minutes for approval. We have two for our approval this evening. The first is January 28th, 2025. The second is February 25th, 2025. May I have a motion? Seconded by Mr. Sad. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Five, nothing carries. We have a few minutes before our 6:45 appointment. We'll move into section number four, which is new business. Here we have first item 4.1, car wash. Bay State Animal Cooperative submitting a request to hold their annual dog wash, car wash, and rabies slash Michael Chipping Clinic at the municipal parking, municipal lot on Sunday, June 22nd, 2025, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Plasko seconds Mr. Sad's motion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Carry five, nothing. Item number two, a car wash. Norwood High School Cheer submitting a request to hold a car wash at the municipal lot on Saturday, August 9th, 2025, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Five, nothing carry. 4.3, car wash. Cheer Advantage Boosters. And by way of background, this is an item that appeared on our agenda last time. There was some discussion as to whether this was a private gym that was wanting to use the car wash. We asked Ms. Woodward to contact the person, sign the application to get more information about the organization. It's in your packet. The organization itself, just for clarification, it's not the, it's not the gym itself, not the private gym that is asking for the car wash. It's an organization, it's a parent boosters organization. And they submitted an IRS form that documents that they belong to a parent boosters national organization that has non-exempt status through the IRS and that the car wash proceeds are used by the parents who organize it to help fund the travel costs associated with their children attending various competitive activities throughout the country. So I just wanted to put that out there as a, just to clarify who was submitting the request. And also, I asked Ms. Woodward to also just look back in our records and confirm that that group has applied before and we had approved it. So with that, may I have any discussion before?
Were we approved in the past?
Yes, we did.
Well, I think we approved it in the past as an oversight. To me, it's a business organization and the nonprofit status is a group out of Florida that they happen to be involved with. People pay membership. I looked online for some information myself, and I think, I don't know what the numbers were. Now, for conversation, say eight people showing their membership and only one was from Norwood. So out of town people, whatever they, I don't know that we should be using our facilities for that type of event.
Any other discussion?
Question about that, because we have a lot of nonprofits in town whose businesses aren't fundamentally in Norwood. Like if you take the League of Women Voters, for example, their parent organization is not a Norwood organization, but the local chapter is active in the community.
I don't know that we ever, I'll correct it. I don't think we ever formally, like we're talking about parks and the common and so forth, adopted a particular set of rules and regulations for the use. We did say we wanted certain type of chemicals used and so forth during the wash. But my impression, what I'm ready to support is local organizations, not necessarily even nonprofit, but the kids trying to raise money for different events. And like we have all the other softball teams, cheer teams that are related to the school system and so forth. I think if we start opening it up, then there should also probably be charges involved. But simply putting a meter on, metering the water, water's not that expensive. So that wouldn't, wouldn't be even worth it. That's why we didn't do it in the past. But I'm just uncomfortable with this type of organization. That's just my own view.
Mr. Sad?
I just, I agree with Bill, because that's what I got a couple of phone calls during last week and this week. It just seems that there are moms of California boosters. And I just don't know how many people, unless we know that live in Norwood residents, that run this group. And it's just, I think you opened up a can of worms for, I mean, I think the intent was, before I got in the board, was just Norwood Nuggets and girl soccer and volleyball and anybody else that had Norwood programs or Norwood roots that deep into Norwood could get involved. And I think you might open up a can of worms for other organizations and groups and say, you did it for them, now can we do it for us? And I just think that if there's a majority of kids on that group that's from Norwood, that's one thing. If they're not, then that's a second thing that we shouldn't open it up for that. That's all.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Sad. Any other commentary?
I'll just quickly say, yeah, I'm fine with it. If we approved them before, you know, I think we set the precedent. But if people feel otherwise in the majority, then that's fine.
Just for clarity on my position on it, if it's a nonprofit and they have confirmed members in Norwood, I'm fine with that, because we already have organizations that are not Norwood parent headquarters that operate in the town, that we approve events and locations and use of facilities and everything else. Because again, to reiterate, League Women Voters is not a Norwood organization, right? It's a national organization that has a chapter in Norwood, and we approve things for them all the time. Now, it has a significant amount of membership, like all the members of that Norwood league are in Norwood, but fundamentally, they are not a Norwood organization. So I'm fine with approving a nonprofit with Norwood members.
It probably, just this is not going to resolve this this evening, but it seems to me that the application itself doesn't, doesn't really request the kind of information that I think that we are, we would be pursuing here in terms of documenting the Norwood connections of any group. Mr. Plasko has the forum there as you look at it. Thank you. It, you know, it has the name of the organization, the mailing address, we have a contact, we have their requests. I don't, you know, if regardless of whether this is approved or not, it might be an opportunity for us to modify our application so that any questions that we are having, for example, this evening, we can address it upfront when we have the application in the hand of the applicant. That way, we don't have to spend as much time as we are discussing the applicant's background. So that would be my suggestion. But is there any further comment, discussion? Mr. Sad?
Just point of information, what Bill and I think we're getting to is that even though it's a 501(c)(3), a national organization, but being a local chapter president of the J.C.'s or the Lions or the Rotary Club, there's still Norwood-based people, or the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts, or whatever, the soccer team or field hockey team. I've never seen, I've been on the board for it was two years now, a 501(c)(3) from a company. So it just seems like it's a different company.
We asked for that, right? We do not have that on the application.
The second time, didn't we ask?
Yeah, the second time.
That's why it's in the packet.
Right, right. It was a request that the applicant, that we made the applicant to just provide us more information on the organization. So it's not something we ask for upfront.
No, I know. But it just seems weird that they sent us a 501(c)(3) application of certification where they're not.
But we did ask for it, though.
No, no, I know. But we asked to see who the members were, if they keep Norwood residents versus a 501(c)(3). But that's all right.
I think, I think our question was, you know, are you, are you a private organization for profit? Or do you, are you a nonprofit organization? If so, could you provide the IRS documentation?
Well, Harvard's a nonprofit organization, but they have a lot of money.
True.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
They don't do car washes in Norwood.
They might ask.
Maybe we let them.
Yeah.
So with that, I think we've had some good discussions here. At this point, is there any more discussion? Or may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion approve.
Moved and seconded. Motion to approve of Ms. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Three, two, approved. And I, still, Mr. Mizuko, maybe one of us or I can follow up with you in terms of whether or not, there's further clarification we can, we can have to, to the application that might give us more information. And so at least we have the information at the get-go regarding questions such as these. We have two minutes to our 6:45. The next one is 4.4, Town Common Request. Annual Earth Day Community Fair. Submitting a request to use the Town Common and Dempsey Bandstand for Earth Day Community Fair on Sunday, April 27th, 2025, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, with approximately 200 to 300 attendees expected. And seconded by Ms. Grove. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Unanimous. I think at this point, why don't we invite our guests in for our 6:45 appointment? We'll give them a moment to come in.
Everybody's going down. Push that table forward a little bit.
You can push the table forward, give yourselves more room. Take care of it, Bob. All right. Well, welcome, everyone. So this evening's appointment is with Impact Norwood. And I'd like to welcome Connor, Connor Brodson, here. And Connor, if you wouldn't mind introducing your, your colleagues, and then you can take us through the update and presentation as we asked for.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank, thank you for having us, by the way. We will try to keep this as brief as possible, I promise. My name is Connor Brodson. I'm the Program Director of Impact Norwood. This is Bob Blood. He is the part-time program coordinator. This is Ryan Quigley, who actually works at the high school. He's the six through 12 wellness coordinator for Norwood Public Schools. And behind me, I have Joanne Yomoa, who is our youth leader and student extraordinaire. And then we have Ann Haley, who is one of our steering committee meeting members. So yeah, we really just wanted to come and kind of give everyone kind of some background on who we are, what we do. You know, I think we're starting to recognize that we're in year eight of our grant right now. We have 10, it's a 10-year grant with two years left. We just kind of want to get our name out there a little bit and kind of just talk to the public a little. So just some background, Impact Nord was founded in 2014, so we're coming up on 10 years of the actual coalition existing. Like I mentioned, it was, we're funded by a CDC grant right now, which is a federal grant. We have two and a half years left. That grant is due to end in September 2027. It was originally founded by Chief Brooks and Sejal Reese, the former health director during kind of the height of the opioid crisis. Since that time, we've kind of shifted our, our focus on more marijuana alcohol within grade six through 12. That's really our focus, the Cokely Middle School and Norwood High School. We're a data-driven community approach coalition. So every two years, we give a survey to the youth, which you might have heard about, the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey that we fund, and just really give some good feedback on all those things that we don't want to ask about, you know, drug abuse. It asks about mental health concerns. It asks about violence. It asks about bullying. And it's really important to collect that data to kind of see where our students are at, where the youth are at in town. It's very common, most of the towns in this area have some form of that that they use, that they give to the students every two years. Really, our goal is to provide an environment for Norwood's youth where they can grow to be the best version of themselves in a safe manner. And part of that, obviously, is living substance-free. We're actually in a very, we consider ourselves in kind of a unique position where we are not based in the schools, but we work primarily with students. And I think it's kind of a great position for us, because we're able to focus on working with Ryan Quigley and the Wellness Department and the administration at the schools and the students. But it also gives us the opportunity to work very closely with the library in Clayton and the Civic Center with SAM, and kind of make those connections between the different departments in town and ensure that everyone is kind of providing really what the youth need and what, you know, what they best could use to support them moving forward. In terms of who we are.
Do you need someone to push those slides ahead for you?
Yeah, if that's okay. Sorry, I didn't realize that was going. So just a quick rundown, quick rundown of who we are. As I mentioned, the staff is myself, Bob, and Joanne is our youth coalition leader. We have a steering committee that's currently made up of 10 community members, two of whom are here right now, Anne and Amanda. So thank you. And we also have a number of other people involved as well, everyone from a law enforcement officer to clergy in town to the mental health awareness program director. We meet monthly to develop ideas, execute plans, and really just steer impact in the right direction. We have the youth coalition, which Bob and Joanne help run together. It's made up of students from the Cokely Middle School and Norwood High. Bob is up at the high school on Mondays and Wednesdays during the lunch period meeting with students, and he's at the Cokely on Tuesdays. And then Joanne and Bob run a Wednesday night meeting that's done over Zoom. We found it's the best way to get, you know, the highest amount of kids that show up. And the students really drive what we do, what we work on. They know a lot better than we do in terms of what's happening in the school, what kids will kind of react to. They're a lot cooler than Bob and I are. So we really kind of look to them to run a lot of the, you know, different PSAs that we do and different initiatives we do. We have a larger general coalition that meets kind of sporadically, depending on when we want to do that. That's just a large group of community stakeholders. We currently have 260 people that are signed up to receive our newsletter and also get the coalition invites as well. Those can be anything from presentations on the data to just community forums. We have one of those recently and just kind of looking for feedback from parents in terms of what they're hearing, what their concerns are, and trying to help them bridge that gap between the schools and the town. We are also part of a larger regional coalition called Mass Call 3. That is Norwood, Stone, Avon, and Easton. I meet with them about every two weeks or so. Gives us some more resources in terms of just printable materials and educational flyers. We also are working on a podcast right now. And it also provides a lot of training opportunities for our youth. We have another youth, Hillary, who's also involved in Mass Call 3 with Joanne. And they go to a lot of trainings and leadership-type conferences, which is great. If we can just switch to the next slide. So in terms of the big picture, I mean, really, the things that we're attempting to do is just educate the community about the legal, behavioral, and physical consequences of youth substance abuse, raising awareness about youth substance use in the community, raising awareness regarding mental health in the community. And the reason we do that is there's a lot of studies showing a direct correlation between students that struggle with their mental health. A lot of times, they're turning to substances. Promoting healthy living and activities, including third spaces. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the term third spaces. The whole idea of a third space is, back in the 80s, 90s, when I was growing up, everyone kind of had their home, they had their school, and then a lot of people had a third space. For some people, it might have been a church. Some people, it might have been a rec center. Some people, it might have been, you know, a sports team. There's a lot of research showing that especially since COVID, that third space is disappearing for a lot of youth. And there's also a lot of research showing that the third space is very important for youth. It kind of, usually, a third space provides kind of that safe space for them to be themselves, to grow, to learn resilience, to make mistakes in an okay manner, and to socialize, which is obviously, as we all know, is really important to youth. And then the last one that we're really focusing on this year is strengthening adult and youth relationships in our community. And as part of that, it's, you know, providing more outreach to parents and supporting them. I'm a parent of three young children myself. I fully recognize how busy most parents are, and it's hard for them to come to a lot of our meetings, to, you know, just engage with us. So we're trying to find ways to meet them where they're at. I'm going to have Ryan talk briefly about our collaboration with the schools.
Thank you, Connor, and good evening. Thanks for, thanks for having us. And it's a pleasure to meet all of you. I always enjoy opportunities like this. I've been working for the schools, for Norwood Public Schools, since 2018, as Connor said, both at the middle school and the high school, in the capacity of Wellness Department Chair. And I really think it's important to point out, since its inception, 2014, obviously, this group, Impact Norwood, this community-based group, has done tremendous work for the community, for the schools. But really, I could say that, you know, the, the extra steps, so to speak, and the effort, the collaboration, the communication in particular, you know, that, that Connor has brought to the position as leading Impact Norwood has been tremendous. The schools appreciate it, those, you know, that partnership with, with the town. So we're, we're looking forward to continuing to see future success. Just to highlight some of the collaborative efforts that Impact Norwood and the schools have shared, Bob, Connor, and other members of our steering committee for Impact Norwood are part of our School Health Council. The highlight, in my time as Wellness Department Chair, I also chaired that school-based group, the School Health Council. The highlight of the group and its work thus far over my six years has been the execution of the first annual Norwood Wellness Fair. We had that last November. It was very successful, in large part, again, to Connor's work, to Bob's work, and just an overall collaborative effort. Members of the community as well. So that was a, we're looking forward to already, you know, what that event will bring us, bring our students next year. Impact Norwood, like Connor said, helps fund that Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. Some key data points that we use there to, again, inform instruction in the classrooms, in the schools, and really bring a targeted approach to what we're doing, not just in wellness class, in health class, in PE class, but also at the building-based level. You know, administrators are privy to that information, teachers are. So again, without Impact Norwood's help there financially, that instrument, that, that tool would not, and the information it provides us would not be available. Impact Norwood, at least once or twice a year, attends our schools' PTO meetings. So again, that communication, those relationships being built as young as the elementary age group has been key for us. In terms of current things that are ongoing, a project that Connor is working with the schools, with myself, with Superintendent Lufon, are offering some of those sort of unscheduled nights, opportunities to educate families, the students, on the ongoing issues, the challenges that our youth face. Bob is available to our high school students a couple of times a week at lunch. I usually share lunch with them, third lunch, every Monday. And I know he makes his way down to Cokely Middle School. So again, a nice opportunity for Impact Norwood to continue to reach out in the community, directly in the schools. That's important, that face time. And then the Wellness Club, one of our last points here. Again, Impact Norwood, working with the schools. Connor and I have had a lot of rich discussion on this. We're going to look to pilot a wellness club, first probably at the high school during our Wind Block, which is, meets twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays for high school students. And there's a plethora of topics and issues and talking points that we know we can, you know, sort of bring to the, bring to the table and engage with the kids on. One of the first ones that Connor and I are going to talk about are the risks of social media, digital literacy. And again, just sort of piloting that, that idea of having a wellness club, see the interest level amongst the students and see where that takes us. So we're very fortunate to have Impact Norwood in the community. From the school's perspective, instrumental in terms of working with the youth and continuing to help them make informed, oftentimes, difficult decisions. But those decisions, as we know, need to be made in their best interest and their overall wellness. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. And, you know, kind of along the same lines, you know, part of how we view ourselves, the steering committee views ourselves, is as culture shifters, that we're trying to move the culture towards one of wellness, and not just for the youth, but of the entire community. And I think, as we all know, a healthy community really is built upon healthy youth. If you don't have healthy youth, it's very hard to have a healthy community. So in terms of some initiatives that we're working on, I pared this way down for you. This was about a 45-minute presentation that I'm trying to put stuff in. Just, I won't go over all these, but just some things that we're focusing on this year. You know, we do attend a lot of town and school events, just to provide information in terms of vaping, as we all know vaping is a big topic right now, to parents, to students. Bob's been at some football games, some basketball games. We try to go to pretty much every big town event we can, whether it's the Earth Day Fest that I heard you guys talking about, or the Pride Picnic, or the Nord 101, which is coming up again soon at the library. We actually had, which I think was very successful, more than we thought so, we've been doing a senior center kind of discussion series, where you bring a group of youth up to the senior center. Again, this idea of kind of bridging the gap between adults and youth in the, in the community. As a lot of us know, a lot of the seniors that live in town do have grandchildren that live in town as well. So we've kind of been bringing a group of youth up. Joanne's always one that joins us. And they just have these really kind of neat conversations that span generations. And you find that there's a lot of common ground. Even though some of the seniors have concerns about some of the, you know, things the youth are getting up to, they, they understand once they kind of have this conversation. And it's really neat to see. We've done four of those. We're actually hopefully going to go back in April vacation. We have a regional podcast, which I mentioned earlier, called Where's My Handbook? You can find it on Spotify, Apple, Google Podcasts. That's done with the regional Mass Call 3 group. A number of Norwood residents have been highlighted on there. Reverend Michelle from the Congregational Church was on recently. Bob right here has been on. So it's a great podcast, and again, that's trying to kind of meet parents where they're at. Parents spend a lot of time in cars driving their kids to activities, so they get a chance to kind of learn something. As I mentioned before, we're always trying to find just opportunities for our youth to attend trainings. We can go to the next slide. Our youth ambassadors are always working with NCM to create different public service announcements. They're working on one now, an anti-vaping campaign, where they're kind of going around the building and just asking random students, why do you choose not to vape? And kind of giving kids that opportunity to say, I'm not vaping because I play basketball and that's important to me. I'm not vaping because my parents, you know, would really look down upon that, whatever it might be. We also are providing, this year, we're really focusing on providing really in-person trainings and different speaker opportunities for community members. So as you can see on there, we have a number of them coming up. A lot of them will be done with, in collaboration with the library. We're actually meeting with them this week to kind of schedule a bunch of these out. Ones that we're excited about, you know, we have Dr. Sajal Prajapati, who actually works in Norwood and is also a professor at Williams James College. And she's going to be doing a four-part series called Navigating the Parenting Journey, where it's really kind of hands-on type workshop. She's really excited to do it. She's also going to offer recorded session as well. We're going to do some vaping prevention for parents with Base Day Community Services. Jack Alwic, who just opened Grand Rising Behavioral Health right here in Norwood, very recently, some of you might be aware of that. He's a really interesting guy. He's got really great, he's got a great way of connecting with the youth. His story is really kind of inspiring. He's going to with the youth. Um his story's really kind of inspiring. He's gonna come talk to youth as well. Um we have Stephanie Patton, who is based in Stoughton, is gonna come and do a positive parenting program, as well as Hope, which is Healthy Outcomes from Positive Experiences. We have done SAMSS, Talk They Hear You, which is really just encouraging parents to have open and honest conversations with their children. Um it sounds simple, but it's one of those things I think parents just need to be reminded of, the importance of having those conversations on a regular basis. Um Protect Your Game is a substance use prevention, um kind of program for athletes, that we're gonna work with the the Athletic Department on soon. Um and then also there's naloxone trainings, which is to reverse an opioid overdose. Um I am trained to give those trainings, as is the public health nurse in the Health Department, so the two of us will hopefully be doing some of those pretty soon. Um as some of you might know, we've partnered with Nord Trails to do some public art on the Germany Brook Trail. Um we have students that are gonna be doing that. Um this one's kind of cool. They're with Officer Baguma and Sally. Um we have a couple students that are creating a graphic novel, um that kind of follows Sally throughout her day, and kind of runs into different situations, and this is gonna be geared towards more elementary age students. Um so there'll be topics like bullying, substance use, um you know, just different mental health concerns, and it'll be at a level where an elementary school student would kind of get into it. Um and then also, we're having our first annual three-on-three basketball tournament on June seventh at the Civic Center. Um we're really encouraging teams of four, and we would love to have adults on that team. Um so Kevin McDonough, who is one of our police officers in town and on our steering committee, he's hoping to get some police officers involved. Um this should be fun, and again, just another opportunity for kids to have fun in a safe environment, and also kind of connect with adults from the community. So, why we do this work, and does this work matter? This is the data from the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. Um this is the ones that really just focus on substance use. Um so as you can see, we administered the the adolescent health survey in two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-three, at both the Coakley and the Norwood High School. Um and as you can see, the data kind of speaks for itself. Um there's been a pretty, I I think, impressive decline in in use amongst youth in Norwood. Um you know, some of the ones I'd like to highlight is, you know, we hear a lot about vaping, and vaping is still, you know, still a big concern, obviously. Um but at the Coakley Middle School, vaping went down nine percent over the past, you know, since two thousand eighteen, past seventeen, si- you know, six years. My math is not great. Um at the Norwood High School, as you can see, um lifetime vape use went way down. We were almost at fifty percent at one point, so at one point, almost one in every two kids at Norwood High School had tried vaping. Um that is way down to nineteen percent. Still, a lot of work to do, but it's much better than than half. Um and then also, we have a couple other ones, like lifetime alcohol use, um was at fifty percent at one point, now we're down to thirty percent. So really, I guess, the the main message is that, you know, our our youth especially are doing the work. Um they're they're really trying to promote substance-free living. Um there's a lot of da- data showing that if you can delay that first use, whether it's alcohol, marijuana, nicotine, that you're more likely to not have addiction issues later in life. Um so we really want to delay that first use as much as possible. Um at the same time, recognizing that they are teenagers, and teenagers' brains are, you know, wired a certain way to want to try things they're not supposed to try, and to push boundaries, and recognizing that just because a kid did take a, you know, a drink of alcohol, did smoke a joint, doesn't make them a bad kid. Still makes them a teen. Um and we gotta give those kids opportunities as well, and kind of bring them back in, and and just provide them opportunities as much as we can. If anyone would like to get involved, here at home, um if you want to get on our newsletter that goes out monthly, if you want to volunteer with us, you know, just send me an email at cbrosnan, B-R-O-S-N-A-N, at norwoodma.gov. Um we'd love to have you. The more the merrier. And that's all we have for you.
Thank you Connor.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Um comments and questions from the board? Mr. Lane?
Thank you so much for being there. That, you know, it's really tremendous, all the work that you do, and um how many kids that uh you're reaching. It it's it's really so impressive, and um I appreciate that you included the statistics of, you know, the, not to be cliche, but the impact that that you've made. Um you know, I think my only concern is that you had talked about this grant cycle ending, or this funding ending in two years. You know, if we need to start having conversations now about how to continue these things that you've set up and these initiatives, because it would just be, it would be a shame to have those just suddenly cut off, which I don't think we would do, but um any any way that we can be helpful, um to try to keep this going, um you know, starting to have those conversations now would would be a good idea, but um really appreciate all the work that you do. And um yeah, just thank you for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Lane, anything?
Thank you, sure. Um so the other thing I was gonna ask is just, I I really enjoy being the board's rep to Impact. Uh it's really useful to see sort of getting a much closer look at what's going on in the community on sensitive areas, right? Because they're, we're talking mental health, we're talking substance abuse. Like, yeah, we get these reports and our police reports, it's a little different. This is the more sort of human approach, as opposed to just the law approach. So it's been very nice. Uh and I I just also wanted to compliment the uh the Mindful Mustangs Magazine. Uh it's another initiative that we started recently, where members of the community are submitting uh different articles, uh talking about wellness, mental health, and uh actually, even though it's divided into sections for kids or adults, I actually find even reading the kids' sections as an adult to be really uplifting. Um like, the recent edition had asked, you know, what is a calm day to you? And the answers are from very young students, and it's like, you're right, it is very calming to have a nice, you know, sit with your, you know, drink, or or just relax. So it's, it's kind of nice to have that cross-generational interaction, and I think it's really important. So I just really appreciate all the work that everybody's been doing.
Thank you.
I very, thank you very much for the presentation. I I I'm still looking at the uh the health survey results, and I think this is a uh both eye-opening for 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 some of us, but also gratifying to see the the impact, you know, to use Mr. Lane's cliche, that it's having. I was wondering if um if if the trends that you're seeing in the survey from Norwood are are similar or consistent or different from your peers in the Metro West area, or?
It, most people are seeing a slight decline. Our our number started a little higher than s- than some surrounding communities, um so our percent decline is a little higher than some of the towns I work with. Um a lot of towns were expecting a pretty decent bump after COVID, um which we saw a larger fall than the other communities during COVID. Um they all saw falls, but ours ours was more significant.
Okay, thank you. And the other observation I had, and I know that you're 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 small staffing-wise, and and you probably have some resource constraints, but when the uh middle school transitioned to the five to 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 eight model, are are there opportunities that 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 you could look at in terms of expanding some programming to the fifth graders and still be in the same building?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so the grant is pretty specific, that it's grades six through twelve, but there are, there there's some wiggle room there. Like, um I think Ryan was talking about, we have gone to the elementary school PTOs, just to kind of get our faces out there, talk to parents a little bit about the things that they can be doing now at this point to prevent, you know, future use. Um our youth are actually working on something right now, where they're gonna present to the PTOs, kind of focusing on the elementary PTOs, focusing on that transition for the current fourth and fifth graders to the middle school.
Yep.
Um 'cause I know a lot of parents are nervous. Um you know, I I get that, a fourth grader going to a middle school sounds scary right now. Um you know, next year when they're fifth graders. So I think just having the youth comment, just talk about some of the things to look for, some of the things to be aware of, um some of the things they wish maybe they knew going into the middle school. Um so we definitely will be doing some programming with the fifth grade.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Final comments?
Mr. I was just gonna say, uh thank you for coming in. I basically knew what your goals were, what your efforts were, but you did expand on that somewhat, so that's information that I'll go out to have. But more than me having it, I think there's a lot of people in town that have heard Impact Now, and yet don't know what Impact Now is, so tonight was a good chance for them to see and hear what it's all about. So thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, Mr. Sad. Thank you.
My senior member. I I just like Phil said, I was just talking to somebody at Boston College about this whole issue, and what they go through and how they do it, and it's somebody from Needham. I think Needham isn't a troubling town, pretty wealthy, high-income neighborhood. Do you how, do is there a list of how we compare with Tri-Valley League, Dedham, Canton, the surrounding? Do you guys have that graph or statistics?
So we get, um We we do have part of the report, the the final report that we we get back from the Metro West Foundation, does include sort of the regional trends, um not specific towns, but again, the Metro West region does include some of our T- our Tri-Valley League, uh neighbors, foes, um what have you. Um and like Connor said, the, our our trends with substance use, seeing those sharp falls, we're consistent with with the regional trends, um when it comes to to substance use. But we don't have that specific access to some other neighboring Metro West town. Because technically, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not considered Metro West. So we're in some ways sort of uh a- an outlier, a little bit, since we're not in that Metro West region. Um but we have participated now for for three administrations in it.
And so all these graph numbers, and where do you get them from? Incidents at the schools? The junior high and the senior high?
Yeah, so the the surveys administered at the Coakley, at um at the high school. It used to be pencil and paper, pencil, you know, fill in the ovals, and now it's electronic. Um and Metro West Foundation, along with EDC, a collaborative, they work together to produce these final reports uh for each town who participates. And it it takes a while, because there there's over a hundred questions that are asked at the high school level. Um I think there are about a hundred and twenty questions. So again, that full report um is is lengthy, it's it's thick. Um and that's where we've, you know, pulled those numbers from.
Yeah, but my question is, if there's an incident at the junior high or the high school, does it get logged through?
The survey data.
Yeah, just survey.
Just, I'm sorry, just survey.
Not actual incidents?
Yeah.
Correct.
This is
You don't get the incidents to help the kids, do you? Do you get the incidents, if there's a report of somebody vaping in the eighth grade of the high school, where you go in and maybe a a help, but um su- support that individual?
So the the high school does have an actual program in place, through MGH, um where they actually offer the students the option of, my understanding is, detention, et cetera, or go through this program.
More of a restorative justice.
Yeah, and it's
Approach to it.
It's been very successful. Um last time I talked to to Dr. Galligan, there was no repeat offenders, which was pretty amazing to me. Um but this this data is self-reported from the students. So we we do hear, you know, I I'm in communication with Ryan all the time. Um so we do, maybe not every single report of what happens at the schools, but we we hear quite a bit.
And it's, is it everything good up there, in the eighth grade, in the the junior high and the high school?
I think it's great.
Excellent. All right, that's it. I thank you for coming. That's uh something important, so keep up the great work.
And thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for sending in.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You know, I I did catch that you're on third lunch, right? Three lunches in one day, Bob?
I'm on third, yeah, he gets all three.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye, Anne.
Good luck, Anne.
So returning to the uh the agenda for this evening, I believe we left off with um item four point five, Town Common slash Park Parks Regulations, uh Rules and Regulations for Approval of the Board. Um let me ask Mr. Mizuko to summarize um work to date on this uh particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to the board's request, we've taken a look at parks, uh sorry, I should say, the Town Common Regulations. We've made some housekeeping and other changes. I've incorporated feedback that I've received from board members into the document. It is um ready, should the board want to go forward, um and approve some changes to the Town Common uh Parks Rules and Regulations. One of the discussions this did sort of bring up is that we should probably look at some point, maybe not waiting until we have a chance to do it, um uh waiting until, holding off on this until we have a chance to do it. We're trying to codify all of our park rules and regulations in a document similar to how we do with our traffic rules and regulations. That document, as you know, is fairly well detailed. It lists out every, where stop signs are, where speed limits are, et cetera, et cetera, what the parking regulations are. A lot of our parks regulations have developed over time. There would be a problem, the Board of Selectmen will make a decision. Uh you know, no dogs in this park, dogs in that park, uh this park closes at this time, frisbees allowed here, not here. The Town Common obviously is unique compared to all of our other park spaces. It is our only free speech zone, but it would be, uh probably behoove us sometime in the next year to try to codify the rest of our park regulations, just so we have it in one place. It is rare that we get a rental request, which is what prompted us looking at the Town Common or Use Request for whole other parks, but we occasionally get them for Father Max, and we get a few for the um the DAV Park, or the Chapel Street Park, as we commonly call it. Uh but we don't tend to keep that all in one document, so when somebody's saying, well, I'm looking for a park, I want to host X type of event, it's sort of, well, pick one and see what's, you know, see what we do. So I think that would be a good second step, but for now, it's just some updates to the Town Common Regulations to uh tighten up use, since we know it's busy, and um just make sure that the uh the board retains a little bit more uh control of what happens in the Town Common with, while still making sure it's relatively widely used.
Uh comments from the board?
Hi. I have reviewed it. I'm personally comfortable with it. If it helps moving along, I'd make a motion that uh we accept the change as an update to the uh rules and regulations.
I just had one comment. I did have one suggested change, and I don't see it here.
Uh was it charging for the weddings?
No, no, no. It is um, that's a separate topic at some point. I think there is, um and I'm gonna have, there is a um a restriction that's in the existing regulations of uh games restricted to no more than three, games that exceed three players. It's it's section K. And I I just wondered whether or not that should be expanded to um um games that exceed three players unless uh under an approved permit from the, from the Board of Selectmen, since we do have activities, whether it's Juneteenth, whether it's the farmer's market, where small games are played on the common, and and those are um organized events that are permitted by us, and I'm just uh very minor, but I'm just wondering if if
Do it add a language, unless approved by the board, or unless it's part of an approved event?
Though, what you just said. Yeah, just, if I could, yeah, if the board is acceptable to the board.
Second bill's motion.
Mister, any other discussion? Mister Lane, uh Mister Plasko uh has made the motion. Mister Sad has seconded. Um all in favor of approval of the Town Common slash Park Rules and Regulations as presented by the General Manager, please say aye.
Aye.
And amended.
As amended, as amended. Thank you.
Now, just as a matter of course, uh our bylaw and our regulations, it's a two-meeting approval process, so
Yes.
That gives you time to think about your v- uh your vote, and it'll be on your agenda on the twenty-fifth.
Oh, wasn't this a second?
Uh be, this is really the updated regulations for us going forward.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's not an uncommon process in a lot of cities and towns. We don't use it. It's odd that it's just here for these regulations, but
So this will be on a a second time
Correct.
For approval to
Full ratification.
Okay. Uh the next item is four point six. This is Talent Bank, um for review and approval by the board. Again, uh Mr. Mizuko, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh again, pursuant to a request from the board, we took a look at our Talent Bank process, and whether or not it's something we would want to um continue doing, change, or do away with. And as the board knows, we use the Talent Bank to recruit interest in boards and committees for the town. We've provided the board with some statistics over how many folks have applied. Um the Talent Bank, I think, was appropriate for its time. Uh to jump sort of to the end, our recommendation is that we do away with the Talent Bank for a couple of reasons. One, uh sometimes the applications there tend to get a little stale, and uh so somebody will check off an application, they'll check three or four boards, and we may not have an opening on a board for a couple of years. So we're calling people a year or two later. We've never really identified whether we want the process to be, you know, i- if we, do we take who applied first? Do we take who the best applicant is? Um so it served its purpose for a while. It was a good way to track uh applicants. What a lot of towns have gone to doing, and what our recommendation is that we moved to doing, is whenever we have an opening on any of the boards um or committees that are appointed, not elected, although we would certainly do it if we had a vacancy in an elected position outside an election, is we treat it the way we treat a job effectively. We post on the website, we will post on social media, we provided the board examples of what other towns do, you know, hey, we're looking for somebody to join the Conservation Commission, you know, inquire within, or send in your letter of interest. Drum up a little excitement when we have a position. It'll also prevent um sort of false hope when folks check off a a committee that just hasn't had an opening in years. And um when you look at the list of all of our boards and committees, there's some really interesting ones, but you'll have folks where, you know, we'll have thirty applicants in the bank at the end of the year, and twenty-five of them have checked off a committee that hasn't had a vacant vacancy. So it just, it gets a little, it gets a little stale. We would put it out there, take the applications, or the letters of interest, I think is what we normally do, forward them to whoever the appointing authority is, whether it's the manager, the board, we have a couple of other appointing authorities. They'd go through them, decide in a process, and we'd bring them in. If we didn't, weren't successful in recruiting folks for certain committees, we'd give it a little, just like a job, we would give it a little time, put it back out there. Uh we'd keep them listed on our website. We sometimes have perpetual vacancies uh on a few committees. One other item we'd like to add to, if we do go away with the Talent Bank, is we've worked internally on developing some job descriptions for boards and committees. We've got some draft ones that we would want to um probably freshen up with some of the We've got some draft ones that we would want to probably freshen up with some of the different boards themselves, bring them to the appointing authority of that board. And then even work with a couple of the elected boards in town to really give an idea of what that board does. A lot of people see conservation, and if you're not familiar with land use in Massachusetts, you think, I love conserving things, so I want to be on a Conservation Commission. And then all of a sudden, you're at a meeting delineating wetlands. Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't know what somebody who isn't familiar with land use thinks the Zoning Board of Appeals does. But then all of a sudden, you find out everything from can somebody build a gas station to can they build a deck to can they build an eight-unit apartment complex. So just to flesh out a little bit more of what they do, and even if I could use the the Most August Board of Selectmen as an example. Most folks don't realize, when you run for local office, the role that the board has in liquor licensing. If you're involved in local government, in Massachusetts, you know that. But as you all know, it actually occupies quite a bit of the board's time, which objectively, somebody wouldn't think that that's something that might be that the board actually does. So that would be sort of listed under that job description, if you will, and a little bit about what that means. We can also include some other items about the meeting times and the meeting commitment, the training commitment for different boards. So it just gives people a little bit more. We've always done this very informally. It would be, hey, come in and we'll talk to you about conservation, we'll talk to you about zoning. But we would want to really put the effort into getting that good group of applicants to start whenever we have a vacancy on a board or commission and give them a real good idea of what they're doing, meet some people on the board, meet the appointing authority, and just go through a good process.
Thank you, Mister Mizuko. Any comments, questions from the board? Mister Sad.
I think I agree with Mister Manager Tony Mizuko here, but I think also to expand it in the light bill. If we have a couple of things that are open, like two or three in a month or something, throw them in a light bill. Because when I got elected selectman, my manager called me, I was on the seventeenth hole, and he said we have a meeting with Moderna. And I didn't know I was a light commissioner. So it works out both ways. And I think, you know, just get more public awareness and a lot of us, myself, aren't on social media and computer literate. So we want to put it wherever we can put it to post it so people in the area could think of what they have and any benefit they can do to serve the public. Good job, Mister Manager.
Mister Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you for this work, Mister Mizuko. I also thought too, we could probably do a better job of encouraging the people that are on these committees to somehow reach out to their networks or just, you know, have it be an agenda item once in a while. I mean, it's a small thing, but just, you know, pushing out. There are openings or there will be an opening, something like that, and just using that channel, especially if they're on TV, that sort of thing, so. I'm not sure if we've done that in the past, but.
Some boards tend to sort of know, and we're fortunate that for the most part, most of our core boards are full. And we've had choices, which is a good thing. That's what you always want. You feel bad that you can't accommodate everyone that wants to volunteer. But when you've got four people for ZBAC, it's better than nobody more putting out to bed the seventh time, trying to find somebody.
Those same term limits.
Well, as part of this process, one of the things that I've done in the past that would be worth doing is keeping members on boards up to date about their reappointment timeframes and just making sure that they still want to serve. Certainly, if they want to, we want them to. But every now and then, folks might want to off-ramp and it could remind them that, you know, you could could leave at the end of your term if you wanted to for, you know, zoning or conservation position. Not that we want that, but we want active and engaged members.
Ms. Grow, anything?
Just that I really appreciate pulling the data together because I think it is useful to see the flow of, okay, here's how it's been coming in and then here's how it's actively being used. So I I'm in agreement. One of the things I kind of found frustrating trying to use the Talent Bank process was when you were a new member to the board, you actually didn't have high visibility into what was already in the bank. So you kind of had to chase down like, well, okay, well, who has already come? So it was a lot of running around and, like you say, stale applications with the person's like, oh, I'm, you know, moving out of town pretty soon, so I'm not going to be interested anymore. Just, it was very confusing. Whereas if we move it more like, almost like a job rec, you're getting the people that are available and interested at that time. And that that might be a little bit better. And it's less frustrating for applicants too because we've had an occasion or two that sort of started this process of people applying to the Talent Bank, but then their name would never get pulled to actually fill the role because it would get, you know, slip through the cracks essentially. So I think this is a good solution for that.
Yes, Mister Plasko.
Well.
Thank you, Mister Plasko.
No, I I think it's a big improvement. I've been online a lot, checking out different towns, things they do, and a lot of them do it more in line with this, with public postings and so forth. And it keeps it fresh, it keeps it open. And a lot of the details that Mister Mizuko just spoke about are very good moves. But I had a discussion with him about you've just created a lot of work and someone has to be responsible and follow through with it, or it will be of no value. So we've had that discussion. I think he is ready for him and his staff to handle that. So I think it's an improvement. I would point out, it does go to the monetize everything and now we're online and there's still, as Mr. Donnie would have reminded you, people that don't use.
People who don't go online.
And so I don't know if there's still any way for any kind of way of reaching out other than them having to be looking on the computer to see if the town has any openings.
You know, I think throughout the course of a year, it would cost us a few bucks, but the occasional newspaper ad wouldn't be the worst thing to do. You know, we can do our physical postings. I mean, when you're talking zoning, conservation, maybe historic, I mean, some of the key committees that we appoint to, that might be appropriate for some of those to really get it out there that we know we want, you know.
Yeah, and maybe also if you just make an effort, if we know there's an opening in the Conservation Commission, to mention it one of our meetings. Have them mention it at their meeting.
Gets out there as much as possible.
We make every effort we can to get the information out to the public.
Absolutely. We can also take the little ads that we'll develop and get that on MCM in between the scrolls and everything. So that way, people will see that, you know, sort of flash up on the on public access as well.
Thank you, Mister Plasko. Ms. Grow.
Second question on that, if somebody wants to apply for a role and they want to send a piece of physical mail for the role, just standard contact information?
Yep, 566 Washington Street, Attention Manager's Office, and we'll we'll forward it to the right place. And, you know, we'll put, so call it an ad, we'll put an ad out for thirty days to zoning board members. It it's not like, you know, something comes in a day late and it's an immediate, no, thou shalt be cut off. I mean, we're, it's volunteer recruitment here. We're going to be reasonably flexible with it. And and our goal is to get people who are interested in volunteering into good positions for them to volunteer for the town and continue our longstanding tradition of citizen governance.
Thank you, everyone. I, you know, it's it's nice work. I think the Talent Bank served a purpose, served it pretty well for a time. But I think I think most recently, my experience with being on some appointment of board members to other boards, it's a lot of the information is stale. Sometimes we run our report for who has an interest in, for example, the Personnel Board, and we're we're picking up resumes that were submitted six, seven years ago, or five years, let's say. But there also, there's also multiple entries of other boards that are interested where I think this approach is much more focused on the person's interest in a specific assignment, not not a menu, which I think was nice at the time. I particularly like the job description detail, to your point, Mister Mizuko. I think particularly when it comes to committees like Conservation and ZBA, which there is a lot of technical work and there's a lot of regulatory understanding that one needs. And that's a different commitment for some folks, and I think the job descriptions get to that detail. And I'm just looking through my notes now. Would would the job descriptions themselves for openings be posted on our employment page?
I think they would, where we put the volunteers. Once, we've got a, we developed those about a year ago. We've got to maybe sort of go through them again, clean them up, get them to the appoint, get them to the boards and committees themselves. They did the work and then get them to the appointing authorities. And then we will put it up. We have an ad, you know, hey, we're looking for a zoning board member. Click here to really learn what a zoning board member does. And part of that job description is the very practical, what is the meeting requirement? What is the training requirement? We've said with land use boards in particular, excuse me, we're adamant that they try to go to some training. So it might be, hey, you know, if you're going to do this for three years, we'd expect you to give up two Saturdays and three additional nights in that three-year period to do some training. So that way, people know, okay, there is a, there is a little bit of a commitment there.
And if I'm on the employment, would it work the same way as if I was applying for a job? That if I start online, I could click into a box that would take me to fill out?
Yeah, I think we would simplify.
An application or a simple application?
Yeah, it would be much, much simplified. We can actually probably use the website to have people do it or just have a letter of interest and then have them fill out a volunteer form a little bit later in the process. So that way, we don't want to make too much of a barrier. It's not, you know, we're not applying for an executive job here. We don't want fifty pages of information. But just a a letter of interest is probably best for a volunteer position. And then we'll follow up with some, you know, we have like an official volunteer application. But after we know that they're interested in that.
Which is basically what the the Talent Bank process would be too. So that, which is a good part of the Talent Bank as well. Thank you, Mister Mizuko. Any final comments?
Mister Chairman, Mister Manager, do we have that, I don't know if it was donated by Johnny Carroll Billboards, that little for the 150s? We have that little display unit?
We, that one ended up not not getting, yeah, did not get donated. We do have some, the DPW does have four highway signs. We could try to put something on that. It might be a little bit too, too much of a message. You know, it might be if we had a lot of them, we might be able to say, you know, volunteer positions available, contact Town and Orwood. We could look into that.
That's a good idea because people like to be in high places with a high billboard.
Thank you, Mister Sad.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the Manager's Talent Bank replacement recommendations.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? It's five nothing carry. Thank you. Next item of business, four point seven, is our light department debt write-off for approval of the board? This is a, something we do annually, but Mister Mizuko, could you reacquaint us with this this particular document and the process?
Absolutely, Mister Chairman. This is what we refer to as bad debt write-off. So these are accounts that are seven years old. They have already gone to collections, sometimes to two different collection agencies, and are uncollectible. And as a result, we write them off. We do this annually, but for accounts that are seven years old.
Questions, comments from the board?
A question. In the process, the last step, do we actually report them to the credit agencies?
Yeah, we will, yes. This is, this is where writing this off, basically giving up.
Some of them are significant money that you, you're concerned that they got that high, but mostly they're small. Yeah, cumulatively, it's a lot, but they're individually small.
Absolutely. What ends up happening is so somebody rents somewhere for a year, and it could be a shop, it could be somewhere. They pack up and they move, they don't leave a forwarding address, and then it just becomes uncollectible. And sometimes the rating agents, the other collection agencies are able to get them, sometimes they're not. I'm sure most of you have had a time where all of a sudden, you find a ding on your credit report and you say, what's going on? I paid my bills, and you find out that, you know, you missed a copay at a dentist four years ago that you didn't know you had. So that's unfortunately what some of these, what some of these are.
Any other questions, comments, Mister Sad?
I had the same thought with with Mister Plasko. Do we have on that, do they give them a social security number when they they sign up for it? On all electric and water? Okay, yeah, so that'd be a good hit. The bigger ones over three hundred bucks or five hundred, whatever the number is.
Yeah, again, these do go to a collection agency too, which, you know, does the credit reporting. It's just some people, some debts are uncollectible.
Yep, I know. Trust me, I know.
If there are no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Ms. Grow. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five nothing. Item four point eight, General Government Budget, FY twenty-six. Mister Mizuko, you can have some comment here, but I also want to just recognize Mister Plasko and Mister Lane for their work on the on the Budget Balancing Committee. And I don't know if, gentlemen, you you want to have any any update for us regarding the budget balancing process before we move into more discussion on the budget? We toss a coin.
I talk too much.
No, I don't want to get into it. Yeah, I I think that it's it's challenging because we see the trends, and I think Mister Plasko would agree. And it's never a comfortable process. We're in a position where we're thankful that we have generated a large amount of free cash. That gives us some flexibility, but as has been said, sort of ad nauseam is that we don't, we don't want to rely on free cash to to plug the budget every year. So, you know, decisions had to be made to to try to limit the increases with the understanding that a lot of things are beyond our control. But I appreciate the job that you did in bringing us the numbers, and particularly Jeff O'Neil. And I thought the groups, the group collaborated well between the the school department, general government, and facilities. So it's it's a lot of work to get to this point. But if Mister Plasko has any additional comment, but.
No, I would just second that. And, you know, part of the problem or difficulty is getting everyone to agree on what is necessary, what is doable, and what leaves us in a solid position for the future. And there's a lot of concerns about that, that we had a lot of discussions on and that people have expressed, you know, a sincere desire that we pay closer attention to that and get deeper into that. The Budget Balancing Committee did put a little pressure on both schools and general government to at least reduce the budgets a little bit from the beginning and recognizing the financial situation we are in, not just this year, but when we project for the next few years and want to look forward. So thank them for doing that. We got down to a position that is what you feel you can live with. The town can go forward with without being in too negative of a position, certainly not harming our future outlook that much with what we're doing this year. So I think they did a good job and I think we, as a committee and a school committee and FinCom have to get this to town meeting and make that, details of all that clear. And hopefully we get get started with this.
Yeah, and I'll just add, this was Superintendent Love's first full cycle. And I I found him, he was good to work with, and I'm sure you agree. Very knowledgeable about the process and really put a lot of effort in in collaboration with this this school committee, so.
He's accepted a lot of blames for past sins as well, which I appreciated.
But we definitely need to get serious, if you will, for lack of a better way to phrase it, on long-term.
Structural debt.
We've talked a lot, year to year, about doing future planning, but we tend to get into a rut of just looking at, how's it looking? It looks bad. We need to actually start doing the work now, as soon as this year's over. Not talking about what's it look like, but what will it look like under different scenarios and what steps can we do with free cash? What steps can we do with budgets or or ways of delivering services? And I think we need a detailed discussion of that that we haven't really had.
I I compliment the Mister Lane and Mister Plasko for your work on the Budget Balancing Committee. And I give compliments to your colleagues on the FinCom as well as the school department. It's not an easy task. You're very diligent. You really work the numbers appropriately and and got the the recommendation to all boards in a timely manner since we are up against our timeline for town meeting. I also, here, Mister Plasko has said here, and I think that's a very good point. I think the opportunity does present ourselves here, and I think we can have a conversation with our fellow colleagues on on other boards. But I don't think we want to be in a position where we we're we're looking into the spring of next year to to do all this over again. I think starting earlier, to your point, is a good approach. And, you know, we have talked a little bit about convening sort of a, now that we have the opportunity and time to do that. We have our FY twenty-six budget. It seems it's going along towards approval. This should give us a good opportunity from a time perspective to start taking a look at that more long-term perspective. And this is probably a good opportunity for us to, it's maybe not be the budget balancing, but a committee similar to budget balancing with assistance from our financial folks, both on the school and the operational people from town and school, to put their heads together and and just look at what what kinds of things can, do we need to do to to get ahead of the game? And one of the points I think would be really some deep dives into if we can operate, how would we operate our town if we were to live within the, the, without a deficit? Or how could we operate without the use of free cash? I think those sort of things require a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of detail, a lot of conversation with with school and and town department heads and Mister Mizuko's staff and Mister Love's staff. But I also think the component of of members from our organism, our board, the FinCom and the school committee might be a a good approach to take. I think that's worth having more conversation about, considering we still, we now have the benefit of time to work through those issues. And that's something that I I think maybe we can come back to the board for for ideas about creating such a force, a task force.
I think what you're both saying is right. I think it's almost like it's a different group, you know. a different group. You know, the, the BBC has a certain charge, but this group, you know, it could be the same members, I'm not saying it's not, but the, the focus is different. It's, it's very specific, and, you know, there's, there's timelines involved, because you want to, you know, like you said, you can't wait.
Yes. Mr. Sad and Mr. Mizuko, and I'll turn to you, Ms. Grow, sorry. You get, you always get the, the disadvantage.
That's a blind, that's a blind.
Everyone else is over here.
Turn the table.
So, Mr. Sad.
Uh, I would thank Bill and Matt for doing a great job, and the manager, and I just, do we have a, a financial, um, actuary person or company that we contract with, or anybody to look at the budget and just come back and give us their opinion as an independent?
Auditor or independent actuary?
We have an annual audit every year. That's not what an actuary does.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, somebody does...
Actuaries for the retirement system, auditors for the, for the, for the general fund.
Yeah. I think what Bill and Matt and you both are all saying, I'm new to the block here, but I think looking at these numbers, as you run them out four or five years from now, it's a big number.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's...
Don't have to go five.
No. But I think, you know, we should really, you gotta handle a lot of it. Um, you know, so I'd say Matt and Bill, good luck, knock it out.
I'm not sure that's what we were...
I was gonna kind of give an overview and offer some counsel. I don't know if you want to defer to, um...
But go to Ms. Grow, then we'll, we'll come back to you. And, uh, I mean, I am gonna remember that the actual motion needed is for the approval, but we will get there. Ms. Grow.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, yeah, I'm in agreement with the idea of having a more sort of long view planning, as opposed to just, okay, what's happening this year? Uh, 'cause there's some, you know, either cost savings or changes or things that we might want to do, that it might take us more than the short, you know, annual budget cycle to think through or to plan out. And having a separate mechanism to do that would be useful, especially for me. So I'm, I'm in favor of something like that.
Excellent. Excellent. Good feedback. And, uh, Mr. Mizuko, you will have the last word.
Thank you. A couple, well, we have the last couple of words. You know I don't stop. Um, so, last year we predicted we would need, or projected, I should say, we need about eight or nine million dollars in free cash to balance the budget. And we came in at about eight or nine million dollars of free cash. We projected the schools would need about an eight percent increase. They're coming in at seven. We projected the general government would need about six. We're coming in at about five point three. Um, that being said, that comes with some reductions in road work, among other things, not even talking about additional, um, dollars for requests from department heads. I think the challenge with our budget cycle, similar to any organization, is we all of a sudden try to make decisions with three and a half months to go. And that's, that's no fault. Most towns do that. When you have, you know, if you're a wealthier town, and you know you've got plenty of money and plenty levy capacity, it's easy. You can make decisions, you can go forward. Um, we have town meeting that meets in May. So the timeline doesn't work to really do the analysis of a lot of things that we may want to do that may not be pleasant. They may be service reductions that we don't want to do, but to really vet those under the, in the context of the current budget season, and it's really any budget season, you know, the board is sort of under the gun, the staff are under the gun, you know, people are feeling like jobs and operations, everything are changing so quickly, because it's, well, hey, next week, cut another five hundred thousand dollars, cut with this. It doesn't, the modern budget cycle doesn't work in that sense.
Mm-hmm.
We have a ba, budget, uh, we have a balanced budget, but we know we have a structural deficit. So before even getting to what we would want to do, that's sort of step one, I would think if we're looking at a timeline, we're gonna have to, what's the phrase, walk and chew gum at the same time. If the board approves the budget as it is, and we'll have the utility budgets on your twenty-fifth, we're going forward with that for town meeting this year, but sometime in April, we have to get together a group, and we have to look at, step one would be resetting the structural deficit. What would that be? Call it nine million dollars for the next, not this coming fiscal year, the following one. The number will be around there. What would that look like? Actually go into details, and I know sometimes we just give generic numbers. We say four bodies, eight bodies, twelve bodies. We'll have to provide the detail and have that discussion with departments about what's the service impact to the community. It's easier to do that outside of the budget cycle, 'cause there are always gonna be things you do in the budget cycle that aren't ideal, but you're doing them just to save a job, just to save a program, just like you would with your own personal budget. It's not good to throw something on the credit card, but if the refrigerator's empty and you're gonna buy groceries, you're gonna throw it on the credit card. So when the, um, you know, when, when the, the sort of the guns to your proverbial head, or the proverbial guns to your head, you're gonna do things you wouldn't otherwise do just to get through. So if we meet in April, and I know it's busy, mid-April, uh, I know we've got, believe me with everything I've got going on, we've got town meeting, it looks like it's gonna be a hefty warrant, we've got the budget itself, but we need to start, have that framework, understand what it is, and work through to conclude by sometime August, September, to be able to present to the wider groups, hey, if we fix our structural deficit by just resetting to zero, here's what that's gonna look like. And by then, you know, whether it's a subcommittee, whether it's one member from each group, plus the administration from the town and the schools, we can say, and we've vetted these things, and we understand what the impact is, and what it's going to be going forward, and sort of what the long-term impact of that is. Because as an example, if we were to shut down a particular facility, well, that sounds great. Shut this down, and we save a hundred thousand dollars, but we need to make sure we understand, well, now you've got an empty building, you've got an empty vehicle, whatever it happens to be.
Or if that was producing revenue.
Exactly. Is it producing revenue? To make sure we don't just say, "Quick, cut this for fifty thousand dollars." It's, well, this is it, but we're gonna take that twenty thousand dollar hit here. We can look at all the small things around the margins, but remember, the margins are just the margins, and they're, they're helpful. You can always raise another five or ten thousand dollars in fees. You can always, you know, cut your pencil budget by a little bit more, but really to try to identify and outline, um, what resetting that structural deficit would look like for the community, if we just said, we're doing it, and what's the actual impact. I think that would be important, but we do have to sort of have two budget discussions at once. We'll be in April presenting to the town, here's the budget for next year, but we're also now starting it. 'Cause the projections we can do on the big pictures, and then ultimately it comes down to, we were pretty darn close where we'd be this year. Give Jeff or I an hour, and I can tell you pretty close where we're gonna be next year, but the details are in, what do those big deficits mean, and what do those operating budgets mean?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Grow.
A really good example of a thing that often runs afoul of this is licensing. So I'm just gonna pick something random that's not anything that's part of operations, but pretended that we had licensing for certain database structures. And let's say we were using one brand of sequel, and it turns out that there's a different brand of sequel that would be much cheaper for us. That isn't the kind of thing that we can just on an immediate pivot, switch licenses. That's like a big amount of planning you'd have to do to say, yes, we want to have savings by not having to have this licensing fee, but it's gonna take us this much time to ramp down off of that license. But if we wait until budget time to have that thought process, then we're never gonna be in a position, 'cause it's always gonna be, well, we'd love to get off of this license, but we're already signed for the next however, you know, two years, or three years, or five years, or whatever the license is. But if we're thinking now about licenses that we want to change or switch, uh, or retire, you know, sunset out, we should be having those thought processes now, so that we're ready to pull the trigger on them when we need to be.
Good point.
One more word. The, um, I'm happy everyone's singing the same song. I think we all have recognized it, or are ready to, to get to it. Um, but in the past, we've talked about this happening, and it hasn't happened. Not at this board, but maybe now if we take the lead, it will. Um, and a lot of it is human nature. Gee, we don't want to start talking about cutting positions, 'cause the employees are gonna get concerned that we're cutting their jobs and all this. People have to know that we're not looking necessarily to cut jobs or services, but we're looking to find out what reality is, and if so, how we're gonna best be able to do it, which means we have to look at everything. We don't have it. Nobody has a target on their back, but we do have to explore everything. And the other last statement I'll make is, I said I'm happy that we're all going in that direction. I'll be a pain in the neck to make sure we do.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
I think it might just go to that, Mr. Plasko's absolutely right. We always tend to say, "Well, we've balanced the budget. Let's after town meeting get this together." And then after town meeting, everyone's exhausted. And then before you know it, it's June, and schools are ending. Then it's the summer, we don't want to do it in the summer. Then it's September, and the schools are back in, and we're saying, well, schools are back in. You know, then the holidays hit, and then, oh, wait a minute, it's March, it's budget season. So i- is, is busy as the next couple of months are going to be, we really need to probably start in mid-April, have some results by mid-August to early September.
Then I, I think the, um, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lane.
No, I'm saying, I think they agree.
Yeah.
I think they're on the same page.
But I think maybe the approach that we should consider, this is a board recommendation. I think maybe we should authorize the, the town, the chair and, and the, the, Mr. Mizuko, um, to, um, communicate this, 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 um, um, desire, if you will, um, that the board would like to do to the, the FinCom and to the school committee, um, and, and ask for their, um, their, their cooperation, support going forward. Something that formalizes this discussion in the form of a memorandum, so we can share to our fellow, our colleagues on those committees. And, uh, hopefully that will, um, will help get the board. Well, there, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of how to construct and how we're gonna do the work, but I think the very first step is, is making sure that, that, um, where we, all three boards in this instance are aligned, uh, towards this, this particular, uh, proposal. And we, we should probably do that in a written format, is my idea. Mr. Sad.
I would make a motion, uh, amend the motion that senior member, Bill Plasko, chairs it from the Board of Selectment and moves forward as soon as possible.
Did I step forward?
You did. You're the senior member. I make a motion.
Well, the actual motion that we need right now, I think, is, um, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Sad, if you would mind holding that until we have...
I will. Yep.
Uh, the, 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 um, all the boards aligned.
I withdraw my motion at this point.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that. I just think we need to do outreach to our fellow board, uh, fellow, our colleagues on the other boards, and then put pen to paper, if you will.
Yeah, he's willing to, ready to run. Let him run.
Um, and then, then certainly we, we, the board itself should have a conversation regarding, um, representation on that board. Uh, the time will come. Um, so, the actual discussion point here is the approval of the FY twenty-six budget. Um, is there any discussion on the, um, and I'm losing track of my notes here. Uh, I don't believe we, I, I asked for, but is there a motion for approval of the FY twenty-six general government budget?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Plasko. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Five nothing carried. And, um, I think, uh, in regards to this budget, uh, it goes forward to the FinCom for, for their, their review.
Correct. Let's get it for the eighteenth. At your meeting on the twenty-fifth, we'll be bringing, um, a final shared cost budget, which is sort of always left to the end, just as the nature of, um, those items. I have a complaint about the GIC, our insurance carrier. Um, and then the light and water sewer budgets, which also include our indirects. We sort of have to set the general government budget first, 'cause that sort of informs what their, um, their indirects would be.
Yes. Indirects being tho- those, those...
The portion of the general fund.
That, that gets assigned to, for services provided by general government.
Correct. We've, we've, as we've sort of gone through, down the path of proper accounting the last several years, we've said that indirects would increase unless we identify there's a, a change or a need here or there, um, that changes, that they would generally grow with the growth of the general government budget that they're supporting. So, um, we just sort of set this first, and then we're able to set those two budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. Um, we can now move on to our next item. The board is ready. Uh, item four point nine, town election warrant for signature of the board. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And seconded by Ms. Grow. You seconds it, please. Um, town warrant, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Five nothing on the warrant. Four point ten, adoption of Mass General Law Chapter thirty-two B, Section fifteen, voluntary vision insurance for town school employees for discussion and potential vote. Uh, Mr. Mizuko, would you introduce this topic, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, under state statute, if, uh, the board would be the appropriate authority, should you so decide to allow employees to purchase, uh, vision insurance. We currently do not offer, uh, vision insurance as part of our benefit package. Um, there's been a desire among a number of employees to offer vision insurance. We would like to do so at no cost to the town. So this would be one hundred percent employer, uh, employee, don't want to screw up here, employee, uh, paid dental insurance. It would work similar to the way, uh, we have a number of insurances through Aflac.
Vision insurance.
Vision insurance, yeah, sorry. Um, I'm gonna get a, get a grievance on that one, uh, pretty soon. Um, sorry, vision insurance. It would work the same way our Aflac insurances and some of our other supplemental insurances do. They're optional for, uh, the employee, and at a hundred percent at the employee's cost. As you know, we pay by statute, uh, about eighty percent for health insurance, and a little bit less for, uh, dental insurance. Um, hearing some concerns from board members, our PEC agreement, which is the agreement that governs our health insurance, so we don't bargain health insurance individually with individual unions. Under state statute for health insurance, it has to be a system-wide agreement. Uh, we've asked the unions that are a party to that, and that's a statutory process, if they would have any problems, including in the PEC agreement, that vision insurance would be offered only at the cost to the employee and not to the town, and they have agreed to that. So that's how we would, uh, to the extent practical, address any board member's concerns that the town would all of a sudden be on the hook for any costs. Could there always be a, a, a request by any one of the bargaining units or the PEC to cover part of this cost? There could be, but they could make that request at any time for this or any other benefit, and we would have to bargain just as we otherwise would. The PEC agreement, which again is our health insurance bargaining, doesn't work the same way our regular collective bargaining does, where we're sort of forced to come to a resolution with collective bargaining. Uh, with the PEC agreement, if nothing's changing, it doesn't have the same, uh, requirements to sort of go through and get an arbitration award, if we're keeping things the same. The state set this process up about twenty years ago at this point, to allow cities and towns particularly to change their health insurance, given that it's complicated, and there's so many different units and unions. Um, particularly to go to the GIC, we saved a lot of money when we went to the GIC. Of course, those costs are going up, um, quite a bit, but this sets up that process and allows us to do it. So that's how we're trying to enshrine, if you will, that this would be a hundred percent at the cost of the employee, and just an optional benefit that folks can take if they want.
Comments, questions from the board? Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I have, uh, concerns about whether or not there, in fact, will be, um, cost to the town, and what that might be. And, um, one document here, they're agreeing to employees paying a hundred percent, but if another part of the general laws indicates differently, I'm not sure that that covers us, and I'd want to make sure, uh, on a legal basis where we stand. I'd also want to make sure that if there is a cost, if we can act intelligently and have some idea of potentially what that cost might be. Here we are talking about budget, budget problems, and every little thing going forward, uh, should be considered carefully. This may look like pennies, but what's that old saying? Watch the pennies, dolls will take care of themselves. So I think we should look at it carefully. Um, and I object to your, your, um, characterization that it's like Aflac. It's nothing like Aflac. Aflac is not a health plan. The vision is a health plan, and it's covered under an entirely different section of the, of the law, Section twenty-four or something, not fifteen. Um, so it's not apples to apples, in my opinion. So if it's tonight, I'm not prepared to vote. If we table it, I'd like to, sometime to try to get some answers to some of those, some of those questions before we move forward.
So I can respond to a couple of those items, if you like.
Yes.
So in terms of a legal review, we did have Labor Council prepare the language in the PEC agreement, uh, and they reviewed the language that there would be no, there would be one hundred percent employee paid. So I feel confident on that item. If you're talking about, is there an administrative cost? Do we get a three or four thousand dollar charge a year? I can look into that. Um, some of our other benefits do, um, do come with that. There's a, a cost you pay to administrate. There's obviously a staff type of cost.
You're gonna have enrollment. Your staff's gonna enroll folks in the plan.
Correct. And, and open enrollment is coming up. So Labor Council's reviewed it. If you'd like to delay until your next meeting, we can confirm. Is there an administrative cost, even if it's a couple thousand dollars, Mr. Plasko's point? Um, there's, there, you know, could be a cost. I don't think there is, but we can certainly verify that. It would not be significant, but to your point, um, a cost is a cost. And then I, I use Aflac as an example. We, one of the units has a disability policy that's paid a hundred percent by the employee, so we do have other insurances that are optional, that the town does not, um, contribute to. We're making sure that this is no contribution, but we can do a further check to make sure there's a, an administrative cost. It may be, um, minor, maybe one time, but we can get that information from the board.
And you had a consultant, based, uh, uh, lack of better words, also go into bed, look at plans, and recommend a particular plan. I'd personally like some information on the plan.
Sure.
What are we offering? And is this the better plan that, if we're gonna offer, that we want to offer? So I'd like a, I mean, their school's in that field, so I'm probably gonna take the recommendation, but I would just like to know about it, like the note.
That's actually a great point.
Have the information.
Absolutely.
So, um, Mr. Lane.
I, I agree. I think, um, we could probably table this for, until the next meeting, um, pursuant to the information that Mr. Plasko's asking for, which is good, and is in line with, you know, what we're talking about in terms of really kind of getting a handle on all of our numbers. So if, do you need a motion to table, or is it...
I think if you make a motion, and Mr. Sad, I will get you, but I think, why don't we get a motion on the floor, then we can have further discussion. Motion to table.
Yeah, I mean, my motion to table.
Motion to table by Mr. Lane. Do I have a second? Ms. Grow, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Five nothing. Um, on the motion, Mr. Sad.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman, I just made the same comment. Rough, um, money. I didn't know what the cost was for this thing, but my, my thought was, for twenty years this has been implemented by the state, why haven't we implemented it twenty years ago?
So...
Or in the last twenty years.
Twenty years ago, when Mr. Plasko was on the board, my...
That's why I was looking at him.
My predecessor brought it forward, and he said, no, I'm kidding, I don't know if Mr. Carroll did. So, a number of years ago, we have a, so in terms of a no cost-
Yeah.
Why it hasn't been brought up, I don't go around asking why employees haven't asked for more benefits that they don't have. We have a provision in most of our contracts and with the T-Non group where we provide, we do provide a cost where we pay for eyeglass reimbursement for a number of units. That was negotiated 10, 15 years ago. Vision insurance is common, why we've never brought it forward?
This is, this is another point that you just heard. We usually negotiate for that, we're usually bargaining for that, not just give it.
Well, I'm leading up to that, because I did read the contracts, and it took me a long time while my wife is on injured reserve and I'm doing Dr. Dad Sad, Dr. Sad this month. But I did read all that stuff about all the different contracts and what was in there for ideas and contracts and stipulations, so I didn't know why it wasn't in there.
So again, it's, it's health insurance related-
Okay.
So it comes through a different agreement. And again, the idea is that it's no cost. If we, it would have to go through that PEC negotiated process if we were looking to cover a portion of it, which we're not, because we just, we're not in the position to do that.
All right. I just didn't know, and I'd spread it in the contracts, and I said, why isn't this sitting now on? Now, all these years later, I'm finding out it's not on there, but okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman.
So that motion has been approved, five, nothing, tabled. Next item is 4.11, cemetery deeds for signature of the board. Quickly, have a motion, please.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Please say aye. All opposed, five, nothing. Late item agenda, I've added in my, as a courtesy to the applicant. We have a Morse house request submitted by Ms. Judith Howard for, you have the document in front of you, I believe, for March the 22nd, and March the 22nd is before our next meeting, so I added this as a late item, as a courtesy to the applicant. It's for the use of the Morse house on the 22nd of March from 11:30 a.m. till 3:30 p.m. for a get-together luncheon for a dozen people, submitted by Ms. Howard. This is a private event.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, any discussion?
Make sure they room clean it.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, five, nothing carried. That takes us into memoranda, which there is none.
Nope.
I will proceed into managers' update, Mr. Mizuko, please.
Just a brief one, the Norwood Hospital Task Force will be having its kickoff meeting within the next week, and we're looking forward to that process beginning. The website is up, I encourage people to go to it, finishthejobnorwood.com. We've been seeing an increase in the number of letters that are getting sent in through that website, so we need that to happen, we need those numbers to go up. We're building out the community organizing piece, so we have a group of folks who are looking forward to doing some organizing in the towns across the region. I know a number of folks have reached out about volunteering. If we haven't gotten back to everyone, at some point we will. We're just trying to get started and put the right pieces in the right places, but more to come. The banner is up, I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, it's pretty well, pretty prominently displayed, but things are moving along. I'll be giving the seniors at the Senior Center an update a little bit later in the week and give them a chance to ask questions, and we can, any other groups that are out there that would like me to come by and do that, I can do that, and hopefully in a couple weeks, I can have other task force members do that as well to sort of spread the time out, but it's, it's been good. I had probably two or three hospital-related calls today, so things finally feel like they're, they're starting to move. And again, just for those of you who are on the internet, check out that, the website, the socials, like them and share them, and we'll see if maybe once a month, we can do a letter to the paper or something like that with some updates for folks not on the, on the internet. We've put out some NCM ads, which have been helpful too, we can get those out as well with some updates. We did just one of those this week.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mizuko?
No, Senior Center, Friday, St. Patrick's lunch.
They're looking, they're, the seniors, yes, noon time, right. And I was at the Senior Center today, and many folks are looking forward to your trip there on Thursday regarding the hospital.
Always have a good time there.
A lot of interest. I'm gonna go this way. Ms. Gro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So I have an important announcement that I know that you've all been waiting for, and it is that I am dancing, we're dancing with the stars.
All right.
That's right, ladies and gentlemen. So you can come out and see me do the cha-cha, does the dance that I'm currently learning. So for those who are not familiar, in the community, we have the Norwood Circle of Hope Foundation. They focus on supporting community members who've experienced hardship from catastrophic medical illness. And so one of the many ways they do fundraising is through the Dancing with the Stars event, where we take high-profile members in the community, we pair them with professional dancers. I believe in the past, we've had, the town manager has danced, I believe, also Selectman Plasko.
Fresh air.
Yeah. So really great event, and I am selling tickets as well as other dancers. They are $30 a ticket, and the event is going to be on April 18th, and it will be at 7:00 p.m. at the Four Point Sheridan. This year, they're doing something new. They have not done in past years, which is they are allowing folks to send in donations online as well, as opposed to just in person with cash or check. So you can go to norwoodcoh.org to find out more information about how to donate online. And then, obviously, you know, I'll be honored if you donate for me, but, you know, any, any contribution helps support any of the dancers, it's a great cause, so looking forward to it.
And perhaps after the meeting, Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Lane, and Mr. Plasko, give you tips, since you were all previous Dancing with the Stars stars?
Pay off the judges.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gro. Mr. Plasko.
Just one this evening, I'm sad to report that I've heard some people complaining about Shattuck Park. You know, I used to be a regular at Shattuck Park a few times a day, but for some reason, my dog has decided to change his habit. We haven't been there in months, but people are complaining that it's, other dog owners aren't picking up after their dogs, and it's got quite messy up there. It never was like that, so I was shocked to hear that. But one thing that could at least help, it's the one place, there are a lot of dog walkers, but we've never had like barrels at the entrances and exits. And there's three main ones, I think, that, and DPW does a great job, things that people take for granted, like empty entrails around town, but they do a fabulous job, so I hate to give them more work, but I think if we added three barrels there, that might at least help the situation.
I think you took three additional barrels?
There's not, there's never, never been any there.
There's never been there? I'm just wondering if it was, we haven't gotten to it for the season yet.
I know, for years I kept saying, I gotta say something about barrels, I never did, but now I'm remembering.
Barrels for Shattuck Park, got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention, we were talking about budget balancing, just give a lot of credit and kudos to Ms. Bodenhoffer, who chaired the committee this year. She was excellent, and she was talking about a lot of the things that Mr. Plasko was mentioning about getting ahead of this and starting early for, you know, future budgets, and so I just appreciate the way that she ran a meeting. She was much better than the previous chair. Which is me, so I'm allowed to make fun of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Sad, please.
Couple things, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank and congratulate the boys' basketball making it to the Sweet 16, the girls' basketball, the girls' hockey, and the boys' hockey. Everybody went into the playoffs, and it was a good round for the Norwood High. Went to sports. And on a sadder note, we had a friend of ours, the baseball community, being an old coach for Norwood Little League, Lighty passed away, 49 years as a baseball coach for the White Sox. And I had to get the right information, because a former chairman of the Board of Selectment, Tom Riolo, was the original, not the original, but the head coach of the White Sox, and Bob Malouf, the commissioner, saw this young guy climbing up the backstop and acting robust, and he was the assistant to Tom Riolo, and he made him, when Tom resigned or retired, he made Lighty the head coach. And this guy was 49 years as a Little League, well, like a Babe Ruth coach, and I know that the baseball community is mourning on the issue of that death, sudden death, and we're hoping that the baseball community steps up and does something in his name. And he did a lot for the community, had no kids in the program, and Bob Malouf did have the insight and foresight to make him a head coach, and he spent 49 years, I know a little bit off tenure with baseball and sports, but my fishing derby's 36 years this year, and it's a long time. So my condolences to Lighty's family and his friends, and I'm hoping that the baseball community steps up and does something special for that remembrance of the years that he had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and just to build on it, Mr. Sad, we do have a letter that I received from Sean Danaher, general manager and coach of the Norwood American Legion Baseball, Kevin Igoe, the head coach, Norwood High School Baseball, Mike Kelly, the president of Norwood Little League Baseball, Michael Sheehan, past president of the Norwood Youth Football, and Paul Smajidalis, the head coach of the Norwood American Legion Baseball, with a very, I'll distribute copies of this to the board, but very nice summary, as you have just so nicely done, Mr. Sad, about John Leideiser, Lighty. I remember him, he ran the Sunday night softball league. He was so involved in Babe Ruth and softball around town, and he was quite, quite, quite an organizer. The things that he did for baseball and softball in this town over the course of years do need to be recognized. And the suggestion made by these coaches from the baseball leagues is that, is a request for us to consider a formal recognition of John Leideiser by perhaps naming the Willet Baseball Field after John. I think, I believe at this point, I don't believe the Willet has a formal name.
I think it's just called the Willet.
Yeah, and, you know, so that is their suggestion that, given his, would have been 50 years, 2025 would have been his 50th year, with his involvement with Babe Ruth, the Babe Ruth League. So this is their request, and I'm certainly open for any comment and suggestions from the board at this point. Mr. Sad.
I didn't get that letter, but I'd like to make a motion that we initiate that naming of the field for Lighty after 49 years, and as you remember, the Kent Connection Football League that he had and his team, and just a real caring person for Norwood. He was the true epitome of Norwood blue, but I'd like to make that motion for whatever's on that letter, for the naming of the field and the lighting with Coach Igoe and the other, Smudgy and all the other great coaches we have on that list.
Do I have a second?
Which field was that?
It's the Willet field, behind the Willet School.
Just a suggestion, if you're gonna look at renaming a field, you should probably make sure it's on an agenda, you might want to do it as a public hearing.
What we might want to do, what we might want to do is probably, maybe the motion should be explored with the Recreation Department, availability of fields such as the Willet for naming, and then, to your point, Mr. Mizuko, come back and have a formal, a formal approach.
Yeah, we'll also do the deed research, just to make sure anywhere we tentatively identify doesn't have any, any restrictions.
It might be school property, but then there's agreement between the town and schools about who's managing fields and so forth, so.
With our luck, it'll be aligned right down the middle of it, so.
So, if you don't mind, Mr. Sad, can we amend it to, the motion to be that we will explore the possibility, start the process for identifying a location for an appropriate tribute, tribute to John Leideiser.
I'll second Mr. Sad's motion.
Very well. Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that's no. It's five, nothing vote, it carried. Christine, just a couple of quick notes. Thank you for the little discussion this evening on the Norwood Hospital Task Force. One suggestion that I've talked to Mr. Mizuko about, and I think this is one that we as a board should, should consider and maybe work towards. There's a lot of work that the board, that the task force is going to do, and once they are assembled and have their work plan developed, I suspect there's going to be a need for further outreach into our regional communities to support the work of the task force, but also to, to keep the issue of the hospital front and center with all 12 communities that are within the primary service area. And to that point, I would, I would like us to consider, as the task force is developed, that we, that we offer our assistance, and it might, you know, my thought would be that, I've had discussions with select board members, several of them in the region, I'd like the board to consider that perhaps we have opportunity over the coming weeks to get out ourselves to maybe get on the meeting agendas for our select boards in the 12 communities and represent the work of the task force and advocate for their support, which is there already, but I think it keeps, it keeps them involved with the task force, and they are sort of our regional colleagues. And with the board's permission, I'd like just for us to consider that, and once the task force is up and running, I will return to the board and maybe we can organize such an approach. Don't need a motion or anything.
They're talking about being willing to step forward and offering that assistance to the, to the task force?
Yep, that would be our, our goal, our activity.
I think it's a good idea.
All right. So we will return with a more formal approach to how we do that, once the task force is up and running. And one last point, so March 25th, our meeting two weeks from now, is the meeting that we are seeing the draft, reviewing the draft articles for the town meeting warrant. It is a very busy meeting, because it's going to be a very busy town meeting. We'll have multiple meetings with FinCom, planning, CPC. I'm gonna suggest that we, we may want to consider an earlier start time on the 25th, so that we're not, not burning the midnight oil, so to speak, at the end of the evening.
Can we do 5:30 or 6:00?
5:30, let's, let's check with the board, would 5:30 start be with the board? Okay. Christine, if you could make note of that, that we will begin our meeting at 5:30, and I will talk to you about, as the time approaches, the timeline for those appointments on the 25th. Thank you, board members, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We are, at this point, not adjourning, we do have a-
Executive session.
Executive session. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Can I say that point of the night where I'm, I'm beginning to- Getting close to bedtime for me, I guess, but anyway. We would, I'm going to read the detail on the executive session, which we have planned for this evening. After I read it, I'll ask for a motion for the board to go into executive session. We will return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment. So at this point, let me read the detail about executive sessions. We are meeting an executive session for two purposes this evening. The first one is purpose number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, federal grant and aid requirements. This is the review of the executive session minutes from the designated dates that you see on the agenda in May, September, October, and November of 2022. Purpose number two, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss discipline dismissal or complaints or charges brought against a public officer. Employee, staff member, or individual, the individual to be discussed in such executive session as shall be notified in writing in the public body with at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session, provided however that the notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to review and discuss open meeting law complaints regarding disclosure or executive session minutes for the following dates, they are May 24th, these are all in 2022, June 26th, September 13th, October 11th, and October 25th, November 8th of 2022. And we have a third purpose, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. So with those purposes being recited, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
On all three?
On all three. Your motion is to, for all three, all three purposes. Do I have a second? Mr. Sad. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Gro.
Yes.
Mr. Plasko.